To convene the meeting of the Westboro Select Board for Tuesday, May 10th here in Memorial Hall. If you are able, please join us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Do we have anybody here for open forum today? No one here for open forum?
The block party.
Oh.
That's why I sit in front. Hi, I'm Jen Kirkland, the Recreation Director. I'm here on behalf of the July 4th Block Party Committee just to inform you, the board, and the public that we'll be holding the Block Party on Friday night, June 24th, starting at 5:30. We held over at Bay State Commons again. I've talked to the police, fire, and DPW. Everyone's in support of the event being held there. We've had no issues the past few years, so we're looking forward to a fun event back at its normal weekend, the Friday before July 4th, so.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jen. All right, if that is everyone, move to the Town Manager's Report.
So the employee of the month winner for April was Bill Hezlett. And Bill is, works in the Building Department as the Assistant Building Commissioner. Related to the Mass Works project, the current Mass Works project is the product at Lender's Road, an extension of Bus Park Drive. We did have the bids come in too high, so more than what was, what we were awarded with our grant. And so we did work with the Mass Office of Housing and Urban Development to apply for additional funding, and today we received the award of $367,124 to balance out the grant so that we can move forward with the project. So that was great, thanks. The Forward Bill, House Bill 4720, and that's investing in future opportunities for resiliency, workforce revitalization downtown, is a bill that was filed by the Governor on the 21st of April. So that bill is a very robust bill in terms of funding for municipal governments. So some of it is directed funding and some of it is funding for grant programs. Specific to Westboro, there's items in there related to climate change, infrastructure projects, workforce development, and reauthorization of Mass Works programs. Those are all funding opportunities where Westboro might be able to apply for grants. We'll talk later about the upcoming Mass Works application round. And then there's also money in there for downtown revitalization. So I believe 256 communities got directed funding. So the bill specifically calls up $382,880 for downtown revitalization for Westboro. So yesterday I attended a hearing on the bill in front of the Joint Committee to provide testimony in support of the bill. We're moving forward with the senior needs assessment. So Kim's been working with the University of Massachusetts Department of Gerontology on the final contract, and this lead board member, Marshall. And Kim will be working with other stakeholders to move forward that work. Kim and I attended the Women's Club Spring Luncheon today to give them an update on the senior needs assessment and ask for their help in making sure that our return rates on those surveys would be high, and they're very interested in helping us with that project. And we've also reached out to some other groups that we'll want to make presentations to in the future. The Conservation Department is looking at fees. That's part of that goal that the board has given me, to review fees. And so they're looking at adding fees to the permitting process with this particular group. They're going to recommend fees back to the board. The board appoints them so you have the final say. But in the interim, the Commission has asked the Conservation Director to work with the EDC to review the fees. And so they've been working on that. The Director is also working with the Eaton College to conduct a burnout pool study on several parcels in town. And then the CLT, WCLT, to design and build three bog bridges on the daydream property. And then the staff in the Conservation Department are doing the annual inspections for groundwater. So they've done 10 inspections, and they have 107 to go. And they've also issued forwards to condition. In the Public Works Department, May 16th and 20th, International Public Works Week. So the DPW has been recognized that with training events to expose staff to unfamiliar aspects of the profession. In addition to armored tree planting, I exhaled the DPW planted 28 trees at the DPW property on Oak Street, and a second round of planting will occur in the fall. The DPW submitted an MVP action grant, so we became the MVP community a couple of years ago, and they've taken the leadership role of applying for grants in that area to secure funding to identify opportunities for groundwater and aquifer recharge. So the awards will be announced later this summer. And then the DPW welcomed Kevin Shepherd and Mike Pulaski to the team. All the judges in the department are now filled. Very exciting. And I've got a development, the EDC kicked off work on the online business directory, so that was funded through a grant. They hosted a successful seventh annual year interview. I think we heard a lot of really positive comments about that event coming back, and then also the structure of that event this year, which is a little different than in the past. The EDC is recommending that the board opt in to Pace, Massachusetts, so that will be on our future agenda. But that's a financing program for energy improvements on large-scale projects. So that we'll probably see next week, or at the next feeding in two weeks. They completed the draft of our customer area policy, so that's the outdoor dining we talked about, and so we expect that that will also be on your next agenda. The EDC awarded four grants totaling $8,174 to businesses last week. Westboro Business is being recognized with an award at the Coroner 945 Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. Kayaku Advanced Materials, formerly Microcub, is planning a 70,000-square-foot expansion to their existing location on 200 Lander's Road. New Liquor Stores is planning to fill a vacancy in West Mountain Plaza. A new Boba Tea Shop, Cha Cha Edmonds, will be filling a vacancy at 25 West Main Streets. And a new restaurant, Jersey Mikes, is moving along 9 West Plaza. The Health Department, the Health Nurse has been very well received by the senior sectors. We've been working with them, conducted a few home visits. The vaccines for pediatric immunization clinic have been ordered and approved, and the clinic is scheduled for May 24th, so so far they have each one signed up. In the Police Department, the Chiefs Mach-E electric vehicle has been delivering and is working well. Comparing the fuel cost of the previous vehicle, which was the Gas Power Explorer, it was $0.20 a mile, and $0.60 a mile. There's also eight hybrids in the Police Department's fleet at this point.
Thank you. Thanks for leading off. I apologize. We need to improve traffic in Westboro. And on the Mass Pike out of Boston, so I apologize. So we have a public hearing at 6:15, but being before that, Chris, do you think we can move to item four in that timeframe? So. Our Assessor, Chief Assessor, wants to come forward.
So he is requesting an appointment on special counsel, and we'll let him give the presentation, but that is something that the board has the authority to. So in your packet is his memo to request special counsel for his purpose, as well as a letter from counsel explaining for.
Perfect.
Good evening. John Steinberg, you Chief Assessor. I'm requesting that we appoint Ellen Hutchinson as special counsel for the purpose of appellate tax litigation for personal property accounts for N-Star Gas Company. These are personal property accounts similar to what the board has done in the past when we had Verizon landline, Verizon lingling cases. They're specialized cases that require expertise beyond what KP Law provides.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion?
I'll move to appoint Ellen Hutchinson to serve as special counsel for the town of Westboro and Westboro Board of Assessors in the pending litigation with N-Star Gas Company.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's quicker than I thought there.
Minutes?
What's that? Minutes, yes. So now, all the way down the bottom. So these are ones, thank you for bringing these forward and doing that research. It looks like there were some that we missed approving back, so thank you for your due diligence on that. So I would entertain a motion on October 22nd, 2021 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, corrections on those?
Who could remember?
Yeah. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Okay, the next ones are October 26th, 2021.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for October 26th, 2021 as presented.
Second.
Okay, any comments, corrections? All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. January 20th, 2022.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for our meeting on January 20th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I just want to note that all our meetings should be like this, that last one minute. All those in favor? Okay, five to zero, five being present. Last one, April 12th, 2022.
Move we accept the meeting minutes for April 12th, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments or corrections on these ones, a little more recent? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, five to zero, five being present. Okay. 6:14. So this is, I will just introduce this and then call for a motion to open at 6:15, but this is a public hearing, so we will call it open at 6:15. A request for a new wine and malt package store license for TJ Farms at 31 South Street. Chris, you just want to give us a quick update as why about the availability based on census on this one?
Right. So the, as a result of the increase in population from the US Census, the town was awarded two additional package store licenses. So one is the all alcohol and one is the wine and malts. And so the applicants before today are requesting the all alcohol.
No, wine and malts. This is the wine and malt one tonight.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Yep, the wine and malts. We have an application pending for the all alcohol.
Yeah. I think that was brought up in the, the EDC comments. Great. So at 6:15, can I have a motion to, to open the public hearing?
I move we open the public hearing regarding the request for new wine and malt package store license for TJ Farms at 31 South Street.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, the public hearing is open.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Mr. Bloom, please come forward.
It's okay, it's okay.
Yeah.
First thing you learn in law school, if you don't have to say anything, don't say anything. If you'd like.
Yeah, please, just come forward to the microphone.
If you'd like, you can.
Yep. Yes, please.
Thank you, members of the board, Town Manager. My name is William Bloom. I'm here with Anil Jan and his son, Mike Jan. Anil is the owner of the business with his wife Nina, who is not present with us tonight. And Anil is, is the manager. Anil and Mike have both been through the alcohol training. We would love, if you want to give us the all alcoholic beverage license, but that's not what we're here for. We're simply here for the malt and wine license that's available. And I think you've already voted on it, so.
No, we actually just voted to open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay, so.
The public hearing's open, but yeah, this is.
What I did want to do with the President's Board, we, part of our application, we filed a floor plan.
Yep.
That's been updated, and I'll explain it.
Perfect. No, sorry for the confusion there. We were just opening the public meeting. We haven't voted on this, so you're free to present.
I should know that, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the only change to our application is the document I've just handed to you, which is a revised floor plan. The only change to the floor plan, this is existing. The only change to the floor plan is in the rear of the, of the facility. We've shown where the walk-in to the cooler is. It was kind of confusing when I had first seen that, and we've also shown where the restrooms are. The rest of the plan should be exactly that which was part of the submittal. So we'd like to amend the submittal to include this plan, not the original plan as filed. And simply, the owner of TJ Farms is an LLC by the name of Sri Say LLC. They've been in business for almost six years at that location, having taken it over. Ultimately, it was the old Cumberland Farms. They have a lease that runs until, for another four-plus years, until July 2026. And they're looking for, for competitive purposes. They have a 7-Eleven pretty much across the street. There's a mini-market that also has a beer and wine license. And for competitive purposes, they feel the need to be able to serve their customers, not serve, but to sell their customers, you know, beer and wine. And when a license became available, we filled out and applied. As I said before, they've also already been through the training, have been approved, and they're the two employees that would be responsible for people coming in and out in compliance. Anil is there most of the time. Mike is a letter carrier for the US Postal Service. Don't throw anything at him. It's not his fault. But he comes out in the afternoons, leaves his father, and works into the evenings until, until closing. There's been no issues that we're aware of with any of the town boards, whether it be police, fire, Board of Health. There are food products sold there. There haven't been issues. They sell tobacco products, and, and they have Keno license as well. We're not aware of any issues over there, six, minus, just short of six years of ownership and operation. So we think they're a perfect applicant for this type of a license and this type of benefit to the people in town.
Great, thank you. Open to the board for questions.
I guess just since the pack was created, has there ever been any communication from any schools or business or worship of the platform?
No.
I would say that I'm excited to have such a family, you know, a family operated and owned business in town. It's fantastic, and I hope you're successful over the continuing endeavor.
Anything, anything from?
I have a quick question. So just for kind of security purposes, I'm sure you have it covered, but being that the walk-in cooler is accessed through, it looks like, out of line of sight, I'm just curious how you kind of monitor that, just for, and it's also near the back door. So I'm just curious how they monitor that to make sure that, you know, products aren't leaving. That would be a business disadvantage, and particularly if it were going to underage people.
Do you want to comment on that?
I just have a back door. Maybe we would have put a camera over there, and we have access to see, I have in my phone, in my dad's phone too. So we have access to see who's going, usually no one goes there, it's the employee's room. So if you want, we can put a camera over there. We don't have any camera right now over there, but we can put it right now.
Yeah. Well, we certainly can't, I don't think we can require you to put a camera there, but you may want to just for your own kind of.
But usually employees go there, only me and my dad go there. There's no customer can go. There's no access, customer can go over there.
So it's not a purse, like, as a patron, can I walk into the cooler and purchase? Oh, it's, it's employee only. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That was a good question. I was, so that's just for you to get stuff in there.
It's only employees only, not for any.
Perfect. So then if we look at this, the beer and wine is, exactly, that's where it'd be sold from, is right on that?
That's the plate.
Yes.
Yep.
The board might have something to say, the ADCC might have something to say about that, but that's the way we.
Perfect.
That answers my question. Thank you, and thank you for having your business here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from the board? It is a public hearing. Is there anybody here in the public that has questions or comments? Okay, I think the packet is full. We've, the beverage alcohol training. I'd just say, as, as, and I think we did, and I see the chief in the back, but we did get a letter that there was no issues from his side, from the police chief, so that still stands. My comment echoing others is thank you for doing business here in town and continuing. If we approve this, which I'm assuming we will, but we, as a, as a board, take giving these very seriously. We love to give out to help our businesses. We do not like seeing our businesses come back because of violations. So it is something that we ask you to, and know you will through your training, but take very seriously. You know, it, we want to help your business, but we also are here to protect the town, especially selling to minors or those that are inebriated is something we don't want to see, and we don't, we only want to see you back here for good things, not for bad things, so thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion then from the board.
Sure. I move to approve a new wine malt beverage package store license for Sri Say LLC DBA TJ Farms Convenience Store, naming Anil Jane as the manager of record. Additionally, move to issue a finding of no detriment.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present. Congratulations. Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public meeting?
Second.
Hey, all of those in favor of closing the public hearing? It's five to zero, closing the public hearing. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, item five. See Something, Say Something update from Chief Lori.
So I'll be brief. Basically, in the downtown area, we've been seeing some vandalism. There are stickers that have been put on town signs and poles in the downtown area. They don't constitute a hate crime, however, in my opinion, they are affiliated with a group that does promote hate. We're asking anyone that sees any stickers or anything that's graffiti-like, which we're not seeing any type of graffiti right now, to really contact the Communication Center. I appreciate people emailing me in the evening on the weekends, but sometimes I may miss one. So I'm asking that the public does call the Communication Center so we can investigate it in a timely manner. We are, we are on this. Hopefully, we'll identify who the individual is that's putting these stickers up. But I'm just looking for the public's help and support and let, let you know that your departments are here and we're working hard to ensure that all people are treated fairly, and we take these things very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And just when you say Communication Center too, just so folks know, that's the regular number, not 911.
Correct. Yeah, just call over just to the Fire Department dispatch, and they'll get us right on scene.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is.
Ian, can I just?
Oh, sure. Please, sorry, I shouldn't have.
No, that's okay. I just want to kind of reiterate, I made these comments at the end of our meeting where folks usually have tuned out because they've gone to bed and we're still talking. But I want to, just in support of what Chief Lori said, that, you know, not only is it offensive that we're seeing these stickers, but, you know, it's, you know, it's defamation of, or not defamation, you're defacing public property, and it's, it's not appropriate. It's technically a criminal act, and, you know, it's not appropriate to be putting anything on public poles, utilities. And I use the example of someone's lost cat. And while I'd be very sad if someone lost a cat, they still can't use a public stop sign or a pole to post that. There are other ways. We do have a sign policy. We do have, you know, means of protesting and all that good stuff. And there are lots of ways to exercise your freedom of speech, but we're also not going to tolerate hate in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any else from the board on that?
No, well said.
Okay. I'm sorry about not calling you before.
That's okay.
Okay, next we have the Spirit Committee here, item six, to talk about senior class parade and fireworks.
So while they're coming up, I just wanted to mention, so Chief Lori is here to give the board thoughts on the parade. And then also today, in your, you received from me, and in your packet now, is comments from Chief Resal related to the fireworks, and he did place some conditions on the fireworks that you would want, would want to incorporate into the motion.
Sorry.
Do the parade first, is that right?
Welcome.
We're back. How are you guys?
Good. Can you just pull that down so folks on TV can hear you?
Okay.
And introduce.
And introduce yourself.
I'm Roberta Brown, and this is Maureen Amiar from the Spirit Committee. Thank you for having us. We're back at it again to do the car parade for the senior class of 2022. And we're cutting back on the years prior, what we were doing. I brought in the classic cars, and now we're eliminating the classic cars. So we did it because it all started with COVID. So the kids needed something to do in the town, and they really worked really hard. So I thought, let's get all together and let's make this the best year, because they really had a bad year. I didn't realize it was going to be an ongoing event, which I kind of like myself personally, because I like this town to have fun. And that's why the Spirit Committee was created by the 300th, to keep the fun events going on in the town. So I already locked in the rules on having people that was legal, legal guardian, on people 21 and older to drive the seniors around town, make sure they were safe. So I thought last year went fine. The police and I, we worked really well together. The community worked very well together, but I, I found out through. The community worked very well together, but I, I found out through Jeff and Steve that the kids were hanging out of the sunroof, which I was stuck at the Hastings. So I didn't see this going on. So I do make myself clear to the parents and the students that you got to stay seated because you could fall off or whatever, but I want this to go on because I really like it, and I am willing, and the Spirit Committee is willing to work with the Westboro P D to make it safe for all our kids. We just want everybody to have fun in our committee and in our community. And so here I am again to ask permission, and I will work diligently with the Westboro P D as the Westboro Spirit. This is what we're designed for, is to make this community a fun place to be. So I'm asking permission, and I will work with the Spirit Committee, with the police, to make it as safe as possible and set some rules for the kids.
Great. Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, so just a couple. So first of all, thank you for coming before the board and bringing this idea back to your point. I think it started as a kind of a, oh, God, we're in COVID, and this is terrible, and this would be a great way to celebrate. I would, I would, if this is going to be, this is sort of forward thinking, not about this year, but if this is going to be an anticipated annual event, let's kind of, I'd love to hear that recommendation from the Spirit Committee, and so that we can all kind of plan and have it on our calendars, and obviously, there's lots of coordination that happens with the police department and, and the schools, given their events around graduation weekend. So I would just ask that, that be something that we plan, you know, well in advance and anticipate and are ready to celebrate. I, I think it's really important that the instructions to the students and whoever's driving the vehicle, that they do stay in the vehicle. I, a good friend of mine from where I grew up, his brother was riding at about three miles an hour in the back of a pickup truck, just on the gate, and like the flatbed fell off and died. And so serious things can happen at very low speeds, and while I know people weren't hanging out, or never saw anyone hanging out of a pickup truck, but sitting on the roof of a car out of a sunroof is not acceptable, and I would ask that, you know, adults tame the enthusiasm of doing that. It's just, you know, because one accident, you know, turns into a tragedy, and now all of a sudden, this event is no longer fun.
Right.
So appreciate you giving that clear communication to the participants. I would, I would also ask, just having been a volunteer at the parade, that there's close coordination with the volunteers. I know that the police are involved there. I had a chance to talk with Chief Lori before this meeting, just to understand kind of the police involvement. I understand there will be some road closures, but just to make it clear to the volunteers, where will the police actually be? I don't need those details, I don't think the board does, but where, where will the police be, and where will the volunteers be, and what is, you know, the estimated timing of kind of the, the process, and what is the expectation of volunteers, and further that the volunteers have clear kind of visual markings, that they're like traffic control or whatever.
Right.
And then just finally, just kind of in general, this whole request, just kind of in general, made me think about kind of the, the cost to the town for police detail and how we budget for those things in general, not specific. I mean, I was thinking about it in terms of the parade, but there are other events that public safety, not just police, but fire, maybe even D P W are involved in, and so sort of to our town manager, I would say, we might want to think about kind of, you know, I'm going to say kind of a greater level of transparency, not that anyone isn't trying to be transparent, but just to understand kind of the cost of our operations when it comes to supporting these. So within, you know, as, as police support schools, as police support, you know, I don't know, the library has a movie night, I don't know. I, I just think that it would be helpful to kind of understand kind of the interdepartmental costs. So no action for, for you as a Spirit Committee, but unless there are future events like the fireworks, like, I think it's important to understand the cost, not just of contracted entities.
Oh, I, I am fully aware of the cost of parades.
Yeah, so, so anyway, so I'm fully supportive of this.
Thank you.
And appreciate you guys taking the initiative to do it.
Thank you.
Other comments? I mean, I'll just make a comment, actually, looking as to, in full disclosure, I have a senior graduating this year, so I'm not sure that whether I need to, it's best to recuse myself from a vote here or not, or.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to disclose, so folks know that I do, very excited to have a senior graduating, hopefully.
Well, I, I, off the, off the books, I did promise Maureen that I was going to have this for you guys.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from Patrick?
Yeah, I just had one question for the chief. With, you know, kid, you know, these are young adults, and they're going to be tempted to, you know, have extra fun. Shelby reminded me of the kids, last year, we did see a number of kids sitting out of the sky, sunroofs and whatnot, and I'm just wondering, as the police are located along the route, an ask would be to just kindly remind kids, if you see them doing that, because, you know, out of sight, out of mind, they're going to, you know, in between where they're told and the end, they're probably going to stretch the rules. Is there an ability or something for the police just to, you know, get back in the car, you know?
I mean, I would like to address the board. We tried that. Lieutenant?
Well, I mean, obviously, the first time that we did this parade because of COVID, we saw a lot of this, these issues. We talked to Roberta for the second parade, the second year that we did it, and I know that she worked very, very hard at, you know, telling the people that they had to stay inside of vehicles. However, we had the same exact issue again last year. So we are, there's eight officers, at least eight officers shutting down the road for the parade route. Their primary focus is to make sure that there isn't any traffic issues. You know, we, we do not have a problem with saying, hey, you know, can you please get back in your vehicle or something to that effect. However, again, their focus is to make sure there's no vehicles coming into the parade route. So, you know, obviously, we, we can try that.
Yeah, no, just an ask if, 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 if possible.
Patrick, I, I think that I, just to find my chime in, I, I've heard that the feedback from some of the participants in the parade, back to the police who were trying to ensure their safety wasn't friendly, so I would ask to the chair people, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's an understatement. So what I will say is, we thought the police department, that we understand the block party, and we think you guys do a phenomenal job, Spirit Committee, and we want to support them, we want to be a part of them, and, and as you were saying, Shelby, we're very involved in our community engagement unit, and a lot of times, we volunteer at these things. So I don't want to, I want to say for the record, we thought that this was a temporary event due to there was no teamwork's event, there was no graduation, and we wanted to do something to support the kids. And we understand the yearly events, I mean, I don't think until the end of June, you know, I'll be in on the weekends for all the different events that we're going to have, and I don't mind doing that. The issue is, there is an added cost, and there's more traffic now than there was in the past, and the safety issues that we have had is a concern. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I thought this was a temporary event because our kids were suffering and they couldn't do the normal activities that they were doing, so we wanted to do something special. But this is, you know, we're going to have to bring in eight people minimum, as the lieutenant said, for this event, and then we're going to have to bring in another, probably six or seven people for the graduation, you know, so, and that's all I'll say with that. And as far as, I know the guardians are there, but it was two years in a row. You know, I'm saying, sitting on the cars, and my concern is, your chief, if they have to stop quick, God forbid, you know, someone falls off a car and gets seriously injured, now they can't attend graduation, and I have to look at it as the temporary caretaker of the agency, what's the worst case scenario? And as Lieutenant said, our focus is making sure that all these people that are going to be stuck for thirty, forty, fifty, sixty minutes in parking lots and in streets, who are not happy when they're stuck in the rotary and everything else, when they're trying to get places at twelve thirty, that someone doesn't try to sneak out and cause an accident and a child getting, a student getting injured, and we ruin that family's graduation. So that's just my two cents, because I really thought this was going to be a temporary event, a COVID event, not a yearly event. However, we're team players with the police department. If this is decided, that this is to go forward this year and years, we're going to be there, and we're going to provide the safety and security we need, and we will find the funding and the resources to make sure that that happens if there isn't outside funding. But, you know, there's a lot of events that, that we go to, there's a lot of work in it. He's our planning coordinator right now until, until his next assignment, and it is, a lot of work goes into this to ensure the safety of not just the participants in the parade, but the motoring public and the public as well, pedestrian traffic. But people aren't always nice to us, you know, on both ends of the side. I could tell you how many people swore at me the first year, because I couldn't get the kids to get back in the car, and the fact is, they're not, I'm not making these cars stop for a second, because I don't want a child to fall out of the car. But anyway, that's just my two words, and I just want to leave off where I started. These folks do an unbelievable job, and we love working with them. We love, you know, providing, you know, enhanced level of services to the community. I mean, the, the sustainable Westboro event that we were at, I mean, all these events are great, and your police department wants to participate, we just felt that this was a, a one, a two-off event through COVID, and I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Just.
I don't mean to be long.
So Chief, I'll just say, thank you for the support of, of this. I think it's really important. I didn't have that back history, and I certainly hope that it's not the students that are misbehaving to the police force. That would be unfortunate. So I'm just, I was simply looking to see if there was a way to, I didn't have that back history, so I was just looking to see if there was a way to help remind them of the safety issues that, that, you know, they're, they're creating when they do that. So thank you, and thank you, Roberta and Maureen, for, for bringing this forward.
Alan?
Two comments. I'm hoping, last year, we did get some feedback from some of the businesses along East Main Street and the Rotary who were concerned about the length of time of the closure and, you know, customers not being able to get there. It was more an issue at some of the salons and other things that are appointment-based as opposed to just businesses. So if, if the expectation that the roads are going to be closed for a little more than a half hour from the twelve thirty to one window, or whatever, whatever indication we can give to, as early as possible to the businesses along East Main Street and in the Rotary and near the Rotary, I also wonder if it's possible in the week or at least several days leading up to the event, if the signboard at Lyman Street and Route Thirty, and possibly in the Rotary, you know, remind people that the senior parade is at twelve thirty and Saturday, and the Rotary's going to be closed, and they should seek an alternate route. And then also maybe give a heads up to Harvey, just so they know not to, you know, have the, you know, the line of trucks leaving their facility to get through the Rotary at noon, right? You know, and that it'll just be.
We do that for every event.
Yeah. Okay, appreciate that.
Shelby?
So I'm just wondering, just to Patrick's question, so two comments to Patrick's question, Roberta, I'm looking at the, you know, kind of class of 2020 rolling parade, you've got the schedule of events that we have in our packet. If you could perhaps make it explicit in that and, and get that communication to students and families about, you know, kind of safe expectations, and make it very clear as to what it, you know, kind of what, where they should not be, hanging out of cars and that sort of thing, whatever that language is, but just so it's in black and white, that would be great. And then to Alan's point, and I had forgotten that, about the, you know, some of the businesses, particularly the appointments, and if, I don't know if there's a plan to kind of bring some flyers around to businesses to let them know, anyone from really Hastings this way would be blocked off, so is there a plan to do that?
Right, yes, yes.
Okay. And, and when would you be doing that?
As soon as you give us a okay or no, I, we'll be, we'll be doing it most definitely.
Okay.
To defend the Westboro P D, I didn't realize that they were having all this trouble. If I knew this, I was stuck at the Hastings, so I wasn't seeing what was going on, because if I saw what was going on, I would have them sit down. There's no two ways about it. And I'm going to say, we will remove you from the parade if you can't sit still in your car.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Most definitely, there is going to be me yelling.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can, you're only one person, you can only be, just as any officer, and to Jeff's point, we don't want to stop the parade, so I, I would hope people take, you know, you know, personal responsibility to do the right thing, celebrate.
Students do have to respect the authorities.
Yep.
Most definitely. That's number one.
Yeah.
And I will.
Yeah. The other, the other thing, just with my other comment was around the DJ. Last year, or it's two years ago, I think that there was a sponsorship, and it wasn't, there was a, an advertisement of the DJ sponsorship with the banner, and I know that there was some comments, I certainly received, that they didn't, people didn't think that that was really appropriate, because it was just a, it wasn't like sponsored by, do you guys remember this? It wasn't like this DJ sponsored by, it was just like the business that was advertising.
Right, because he donated.
Right, but it was, it, it just looked like an advertisement on the, on the booth. It didn't say sponsor, but like, it just looked like an advertisement of a business on the Rotary, and, and a number of people thought that that was not appropriate, so.
Okay.
So if, if there's a sponsor for the DJ, I guess the message is, make sure the signage says.
Sponsored by.
DJ sponsored by.
Yeah.
In the name of the business, not just in banner or advertisement.
Not just the name of the business.
So people know why that business's name is on the Rotary, that it's part of the event.
All right.
Correct.
I just wanted to give credit to the person.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I appreciate.
That's fine.
I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it was the sponsored by that was missing.
All right. I'm sorry with all these rules.
No, no, no.
I'm kind of a rebel a little bit, so I'm kind of like.
Really?
Just a little bit, Ian, you know that.
Sean?
Yeah, I just want to say, I wasn't as aware that there was prior issues with this, and I, it sounds like just a communication of expectations to the parents right there.
Right.
They're going to be there, they're going to be in the cars, and this is an extra event. It does not have to happen in the future, you know, if it can't be handled properly. So much appreciated if that could happen.
I, I thought when I told the parents, or somebody that the age of twenty-one would be driving, their parents would say, sit down. I, I assumed that, but it didn't work that way, unfortunately. So now we have to kind of take that extra step to kind of remind people that safety comes first. So we will definitely do that.
Right, I would, I would just add to that, I know you've been working with Brian Callahan on this.
Brian's great.
That's, to me, that, ahead of time, the, the format, you know, basically sending it out to the seniors, but also senior parents of what are expectations. I mean, this is, they're moving a car, we're supposed to have seatbelts on.
Yes.
Not hanging out. But also, I would say, this is, if you can't comply, you're ruining it for.
Everybody else.
Everybody else.
Absolutely.
You know, to, the chief said it, yeah, that, I mean, that was the intention to start, it's been very popular.
Right.
But it doesn't have to go on, and if, if, if we can't follow the rules, then we, personally, I don't think we continue to support it. So they're celebrating themselves, but if they can't behave, they're hurting future opportunities. There's, I think we have to tell them that.
There's rules, there's rules in every parade that I put on. I don't know what happened, unfortunately, but we will.
No. And this is, don't take this as a knock on you, this is just trying to make this better. We want to support our police here to make it safe for everybody.
I'm glad that they said something, because I didn't know what was going on down the road, so, thank you.
Anything else from the board on this, or?
Ian, just a quick question, point of order question for you. I was just pulling up the policy, because Shelby reminded me of the sign policy on the Rotary, and we explicitly prohibit advertisements in that policy. We do obviously allow for celebrations and memorial events, but as a point of order, if, are we saying as a board that, I'm not sure who, if the same person's sponsoring But as a point of order, if, are we saying as a board that, I'm not sure who, if the same person sponsoring this year or or not, but if they are, can they put up any sign whatsoever, even, even something that says sponsorship? Or are we going to make, do we need to make a special vote of the board per our policy to allow for that, that sign to be posted?
You should include it in your vote.
Okay.
If you're going to allow it, you should put it in your vote.
And actually.
Is that the plan? That it'll be sponsored again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm not 100%.
Okay.
Because the person is viewing this probably right now.
Okay.
So I think he gets the message.
Okay, but we can put, make that as part of our vote. But that actually just reminds me, are there going to be flags on the Rotary at that time? I forgot what our last vote was with the Veterans Advisory for Memorial Day.
Not yet.
Not yet? They would be, right? See, I was going to check.
I think there will be.
Well, I, I guess, I think it, if there are going to be flags on the Rotary, there will not be a place. I mean, depending upon how they are placed, the DJ could be inside if it's, if they are bordering, as they've done, I think, more recently with their design.
I would, I would argue if there are flags on the Rotary as a, in memorial to soldiers who have fallen in battle, we should not have a DJ.
Agreed, I would agree with that.
Right.
Go placed with them.
I was just going to add that if there are flags on the Rotary, then I think we'll, we should find another location for the DJ.
It's June 25th.
So we weren't doing it for Memorial Day.
So we're not doing it for Memorial Day, okay, okay.
June 25th to July 9th and October 26th.
Okay, thank you, all right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take this as two, just because they're, they're, they're different. So I would entertain a motion on the senior parade.
I move we close, approve the closure, the closure of the roads as proposed for the purpose of the senior class parade and further allow for signage on the Rotary if it is indicating sponsorship of the event.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All those in favor? It's five to zero, five being present, thank you. Next, fireworks.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Stephen Solomon, member of the Spirit Committee. And I just want to start off by saying that this event that we're going to be discussing is actually taking place in 2023, not 2022, but there are some contractual and process obligations that we need to get started on and planning that we need to get started on. So we're bringing it forward tonight to just make you aware of it and see if we can get moving. Late in, actually in the fall of last year, the Spirit Committee started having discussions about having a fireworks demonstration in the town, potentially in 2022. We explored a number of dates, went back and forth on a number of dates and decided relatively recently that we would like to try to coincide it with the block party on June 30th in 2023. So we've already done a lot of the groundwork in terms of meeting with Chief Purcell and Deputy Chief Fersky, lining up a potential provider, the same pyrotechnics company that provided the fireworks for the 300th anniversary. Deputy Chief Fersky and I have been, have met with the president of that company, done a pretty extensive survey of a variety of sites around the town to get the fire department's input and to, you know, think, you know, sort of clearly and critically about the logistics of such an event. And, you know, now that we've sort of got all of that established, we've gotten Jen Kirkland on board to have this event coincide with block party. And at this point, we'd like to, you know, sort of begin the formal contract process with Atlas Pyrotechnics and also start the formal planning for all of the logistics of the event so that we're ready to go on June 30th, 2023.
Other comments? Patrick?
I, I guess I'm just wondering about the process here a little bit. We in no way, right now, there's no requirement that we identify a location yet for this. This is just simply to initiate the contractual agreement, whereas that already been identified in.
Yeah, so the, I'm sorry to interrupt. The, the site, potential site has already been identified. The, the field behind the senior center near Hastings School is going to be the deployment site for the fireworks. And the viewing site will be adjacent to the Hastings School in the field. Those are the two locations or those are the, the principal locations that were both okay, both by the Pyrotechnics Company and by Deputy Chief Fersky on our visit out there.
Okay. Question?
Other, do you have a question?
No, no, I know we, we have some recommendations with respect to licensing and other conditions from the fire chief. So I assume you're familiar with that and will be proceeding accordingly.
Yeah, so I haven't seen completely what Chief Purcell provided in your packet, but I'll follow up with him tomorrow to get a copy of it. But he and Deputy Chief Fersky and I have had extensive conversations. Actually, Chief Purcell and Deputy Chief Fersky were at several of our initial meetings when we started planning this out. So we're in pretty close communication about it.
I'm assuming we should put that in our motion though, what the, or or just refer to that.
The conditions, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think it would be helpful to, just for the public, since they don't see this, to read what those conditions are.
Somebody have that up?
Sure, so the, the conditions are one, that the vendor apply for and obtain permitting under Section 527 Code of Massachusetts Regulations 1.0. I will read the section numbers, 1.12, 8.39, 2.2, Part 1.
You get that?
The fireworks are either low or no perchlorate containing fireworks. And that the Board of Health, from the perchlorate's perspective, works with the Water Department and the Fire Department to assure that display setup site is located outside of a Zone 2 wellhead protection area.
Okay. Yeah, so the best, to the best of my memory, and I'm old, so my memory is failing. Those are the stipulations that Matt Shea, who's the president of Atlas Pyrotechnics, discussed with Deputy Chief Fersky and I the day that we surveyed the sites. So if those are not included in the Atlas contract, I'll make sure that they are added as part of that contract.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. So let's refer to that as in our motion if we could, and I would entertain a motion.
Sure, I move we approve the hosting of a fireworks display in conjunction with the town's annual block party in, on June 30th, 2023, that we authorize the town manager to sign.
So I didn't put the date in because my understanding is that this would be an annual event. So I guess it's up to you whether or not you want this to come before you annually. If you want to specify the date and then have it come back to you next year.
I would be more comfortable specifying this date.
Let's see how it goes this year and then bring it back, just.
I agree.
Okay, I, I like the fact that it's annual, but let's.
Yeah, yeah.
One step at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, so I move we approve the hosting of a fireworks display in conjunction with the town's annual block party, currently scheduled for June 30th, 2023, and further to authorize the town manager to sign all contracts contingent on compliance with the stipulations as provided by the fire chief.
Second that?
Did you have Christine? Okay.
Question?
Uh, yeah, I'm just curious, what is the anticipated cost of the fireworks?
So the anticipated, we have approximately $27,000 available. And the anticipated range is between 25 and 30,000.
And when you said just for public, this is in the Spirit Committee.
Coffers.
Coffers, that's correct, yes.
Not really a budget.
Yes, that's correct, this is Spirit Committee money.
Thank you.
So is that completely empty in the account?
It will get it close to being empty, yes.
So, okay, so there's no anticipation of raising, if it's within the coffers, if you will, of the Spirit Committee? And it, there wouldn't be any additional fundraising or whatever, they can't fundraise, so, okay.
Yeah, so.
So how would that work?
So that money came from the 300, which, under separate section of law, they were allowed to fundraise.
Right.
So they can't do any fundraising, so any, they could potentially get donations. So they would have to set up a gift fund.
Okay.
And then the other opportunity exposed if the town wanted to make it annual, it might end up being a regular article. I think actually that's what they were thinking.
Okay. So, so, right, so donation was the wrong word. So that there could be, they could accept gifts, should that be a need, but then a gift account like we've done for other committees would need to be set up. Okay, thanks.
And so that's actually part of the plan. I think one of the reasons we want to get this started is way in advance of the event is in the anticipation that we have to use additional monies, et cetera.
Love the advanced planning and I think it's great, be great for the town.
All those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Forward to it. Okay, next on the agenda is item seven, intersection of Parkman Street and West Main Street.
So the, the chief had received concern from a resident, Chris Allen, who's actually here, about the intersection of Parkman and West Main. The chief had some concerns about that intersection as well, and it was brought to the Act of Transportation Safety Committee. The committee is interested in doing sort of a full look at all of those intersections downtown. In the meantime, we had discussed temporarily removing some of, putting cones in some of the spaces just to sort of get an idea of what we would be looking at in terms of some sort of remedy if the town decided that we needed to do that. However, since we've put together the packet in review of our traffic rules and regulations, we found that actually once the, the spot closest to Parkman in front of the Forbes building actually should not be there. And so we could be compliant with our traffic rules and regulations by removing that spot. And it wouldn't be temporary, you would actually have to hold a hearing to amend the traffic rules and regulations to add that spot back. So Chief can speak to it.
So I'll make it real, real simple. Article 5, Section 5-1, when you go down to I, upon any street or highway within 20 feet of an intersecting way except alleys. So basically, just by my, what I would suggest is we remove that, have DPW remove that space, monitor it for, for six, seven, eight months and determine if other type of, you know, mitigation needs to be put in place. I will, just so the board knows, I did crunch the numbers from when I started till today, four and a half years. We've had a total of four accidents. We had one in 2018, we had one, two in 2019 and one in 2021. I don't think that, you know, is a high number of accidents given that area. I do agree with Ms. Allen that the line of sight is very difficult. But before we make, talk about making that, you know, one-way street or right turn only, I'd like to monitor this. And the accident data clearly shows that, you know, we can take some time with this. Not saying there may, there may be an accident there, but I think this, we should take a real hard look at this and see if it works.
So I just had one follow-on question, so I think absolutely let's remove that spot. It shouldn't be there, so let's, I, I totally agree with that, it's good. But I think we were talking about two spots. Do we want to still put a cone off another one? So we'll get rid of the one spot, but then also block that other one for the time being, or is?
Yeah, we can definitely try that.
Do we, do we need to, I guess is.
I guess that's my question, do you think we need to?
I think, I think that one spot, we take a look at that right now.
And then you can come back to us if you think you need that one blocked.
Yeah.
I walked, I walked down there just before the meeting and I look, you know, got a line of sight there. And if you're turning right, if you're looking to the right as you're pulling out, there's, the parking spot is a little further down, there's a little bit more of an angle that's been blocked off. So you do have a little bit better.
You're talking about in front of the library.
In front of the library, correct. So there is, that's a little bit better than the left-hand side, looking back towards the center of town. But I do, I certainly start with one, but I, I would even support blocking off two, one on either side because I think it would be interesting to see how that opens up the line of sight for, for people to turn either direction.
So to clarify, there's no action needed by the board because it's already be, going to be compliant with our rules and regs? And if, we would actually be removing that spot, so it wouldn't be the temporary blocking with cones that we talked about? We'll just be removing the spot.
Yeah, so I think we, I think we, we move forward with that, do it and just ask, you know, to give us update down the road and to see where we go with that.
So is the spot, I'm just want to be clear, is the spot in front of the library on the corner of Parkman, is that also not compliant with our policy or is, is there more space?
I mean, I'd have to go measure it, to be honest with you, there is a little bit more space. You do have the authority as the board, select board to basically waive that.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, you could go all around this general area and say, ooh, jeez, we maybe taken a lot of spaces out. So I think it's a case-by-case basis, but I think as, as Ms. Allen has identified, I think this is definitely, at least that one, if, if you want us to, to block off another one, we can. It's not a problem.
My feeling is start with the one space.
Yeah.
Watch for a few months. If there's still an issue or we want to test, you can always temporarily block off additional spaces on either side of Parkman.
Sure.
Just to, to deal with sightlines if needed.
I think we want to give it a good test because Westboro does have a little bit of an exodus strategy in the summer. So the summer may not be a good test. So I think we do want to give it a good, you know, six months or so to, to monitor that second spot. So I'd be certainly in favor of the one in front of Forbes. The other, well, I'll, I'll leave it at that right now.
I agree.
Was there anyone?
Yes. Krista?
Chris Allen, Aide Edward Dunway. I'm delighted, I am not going to kill myself going, turning left onto West Main Street. It was interesting that that's an illegal space anyway. So it's good that that will, that space indeed will be eliminated because hundreds of families, plus old people like me, turn from the library, trying to go left on the Rotary and can't see at all. The line of sight is gone, so I close my eyes and, and gun it and hope I don't get killed.
I don't like to hear that.
I don't, I really don't.
Driving anyone in the senior parade.
Basically, I don't do that, but I, but I really am fearful of my life going, turning left. So therefore, eliminating that space that should be eliminated is an important move. If you see fit to eliminate one or another space on either side with cones, I think that's a good idea too. I just think that safety is of the utmost and all kinds of, that particular intersection is not like your usual little intersections coming into West Main Street. That's used heavily by so many people using the library and those of us using the Historical Society is just a very busy place. So looking at it carefully for perhaps taking out or temporarily by cones perhaps, either another space in front of the library or two spaces on either side, I think would be a very good idea. But thank you very much and particularly thank you, Chief Laurie, for finding that particular important space that should be eliminated. Thank you.
Great, I think, I mean, in here, I think that I'm in support of initially removing that spot. And then taking a look at it, Chief, I defer to, to your expertise and your department says, do you think that improves the line of sight? If you, if you look at it, even with removing that, say there's still an issue, I would say come back and we can put the cones in there, but for right now, let's eliminate that space as it should be. And if you don't mind, just looking and seeing if it, if it, if that improves it enough to test it. If you think it doesn't really improve it at all, then I think come back and we can discuss putting cones on both sides, so. Great, thank you. Okay, next, Sustainable Westboro, mission, member terms and update. Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I do have slides that were sent. I will comment that it may be phraseology, but it's really not about the mission as much as the charter and structure of, of the organization that I'll be talking about and making some suggestions. I, I have the, that's not what I wanted to show. That's not it either. That's a little better. Very good. So thank you for the chance to talk. We, I presented about a year ago and as we were restructuring Sustainable Westboro at that time, we set the organization up with one-year terms of, of the committee and restructured the membership and, and made changes at that time. And we did it, in my view, with a, let's get underway into this structure and, and have the experience of a year and then come back. So we're back with proposals reflecting that. So the nine-member voting committee that we set up at the time with four members representing staff and. representing staff and board positions, in the five-at-large member structure, we found to work quite effectively. We think the size of nine is, is an effective size. The two changes that are most material here on this slide are the three-year terms with the staggered, for the five-at-large members, and to add in addition, an associate member of high school students, two high school students in a non-voting capacity, also appointed by the Select Board with a, a one-year term, with the idea that students turn over faster and do good things like graduate. We have had a very good support from high school students, from the Environmental Club already participating, and this is basically formalizing activities that have been ongoing. The structure we've established in our offices is to have a Chair, a Vice Chair, and a Secretary, using essentially the standards that were put into the Committee Guide that's been published and so forth, elected annually in the July meeting by the Sustainable Westboro Committee. I do have, so you're well aware of what a staggered three-year term is, my recommendation is to have two starting immediately on a one-year term, two on a two-year term, and then one on a three-year term, and then of course, repeat after that. Again, this allows people to volunteer who may feel like a one-year commitment is all they can handle at this time, and it maximizes the opportunity for that. So that was the only nuanced point on that slide. So before I, why don't I just keep going through, if I can get my things to advance? One of the things we talked about quite a bit at the Sustainable Westboro Committee was to look at, kind of what is the role of the committee as we advertise for people to apply for these positions? One of our key things is, is a strategic planning role, and look at a long-term plan, including specifically the Climate Action Plan, but also relevant portions of the Master Plan, which has climate and sustainability woven throughout it. And also to work in partnership with other parts of the town on environmental projects that you may identify as, as being important, and to monitor state activities and federal activities that will be impacting the town, and be a resource in that way. Beyond just maintaining a long-term strategic plan, there's always more projects and more work that we could, could do, so there's a prioritization of what activities to take on, and, and to achieve, to achieve the long-term strategic goals, and to play an advisory role to these other towns, specifically the Select Board, the Planning Board, and the School Committee, but really any part of the town that wants to hear from us and would value our input. We, I presented to the Library Building Committee recently as an example. And in working with town staff, and Christie, and others that we hope to be adding in the future, is monitor the execution of the projects, and, 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 you know, projects may be led by some other committee, for example, green zoning may be led by the Planning Board, and not really led by Sustainable Westboro. So we, we will provide a, a monitoring function and, and a reporting process back to the Select Board on progress against the, both the activities we've committed to and projects, as well as the strategic plan. Again, the Chair, Vice Chair, all of this is pretty standard stuff, you had it in your package. One area we spent some time on was the roles of individual committee members, and it's important that the people representing the other boards, like Patrick representing Select Board, Ragu on the School Committee and stuff, provide an active coordination and management between the committee, they, kind of their home committee, as, and us, and work on both sides in a two-way communication. And, and we hear from them what you feel is important as a Select Board, or from Ragu, what the School Committee feels is important, and gets, and we get pulled back into the process at the appropriate time. So we want to make sure that that is working. And, and based on the interest and time availability and stuff, to be active members of projects on the, on the Sustainable Westboro to-do list. The at-large members were really looking for members that are active and engaging on at least one of the programs, and roll up their sleeves and get involved. And the, this was a point of discussion, and we need to be cognizant of, the more we expect of at-large members, the more exclusionary it becomes, that certain people have day jobs, have busy families and stuff, will be excluded if we make it too much. And, and we're trying to find that balance, where somebody can recruit volunteers and can play a more minor role, as long as there's some involvement in, in the programs. I think it's important that the at-large members be active in, in the efforts of the committee, and, and not just come to a monthly meeting. But we'll be, you know, we are reasonable, and we intend to continue to be reasonable in regard to kind of rightsizing people's, our, our expectation of individual people. And, and we have structured ourselves around five programs, from community outreach to four technical areas, as shown here. I think that's my last slide before I go to the state programs. If you have any questions...
Yeah, why don't we stop it there on that piece before you go to the state? Any questions or comments from the Board?
I'll just start off by commenting, and first I'll just say to Pete and the entire Sustainable Westboro team, I think, I've been on the committee for a little over a year now, and I, it's fantastic to see the passion and the dedication of this committee. I think most all of us were able to attend the Energy Fair, so you saw some results of that great work. I would say that what Pete has presented here was talked about at one of our meetings just, I think, a few months ago, and the committee as a whole, you know, reviewed kind of the, the, the dynamic of the committee, and, you know, the cadence of, of appointments and whatnot, and I think there was full support of what, what Pete is putting here, putting forward here, so I'm completely supportive of it. And, and then the other thing is that he just covered was also just making sure that people understood what the expectations of, as we go out and look at, or look for volunteers to join the committee, because there's a lot of work that needs to be done here, and certainly in conjunction with the Master Plan, the activities there. So, we just wanted to make sure that that was well done, and I, I thank Pete for, for leading the charge on pulling that together and presenting it to the team, so. Just some thoughts.
Thanks.
And I'm not sure protocol, but Christie's also a member of the committee, and I don't know whether it's my place to invite her into the discussion, but I'd encourage that.
No, I think that this is, you know, that we've been sort of working to figure out how we move forward, and I think, you know, this has been a lot of work to kind of get to this point, so I think it sets us up well for, for how we're going to move forward.
You have the comments, question?
Yeah, no, I really, I appreciate the structure that's been put forward, I think it's a great model for other committees that might be watching our meeting, and thinking about their, terms of their members, and given the issuance of the new committee handbook and guidelines. So really appreciate the structure and clarity around the mission as well, and the focus and the programs. And it's, I know you're going to talk, there's a second part of this, there's a lot of work to be done here, and it will be a, like a delicate balance of kind of that enthusiasm of volunteers and wanting to move forward, and recognizing that there's significant work to be done, not only kind of as volunteers and residents and businesses, but by town staff as well. And kind of that, that interplay and, you know, collaboration and cooperation is going to be really, really important to sustainable success.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
You okay? Want a motion for this part?
Patrick, is Patrick going to do it?
Patrick, go back up here, hold on one second.
I move to approve the amended mission and member terms for Sustainable Westboro as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Five to zero, five being present. Okay, moving on.
So I, I put this slide together and actually used it at the, at the Energy Fair, and it's a, we're living in, in interesting and dynamic times in this space, and if I can get my glasses on, so I can look at my notes here, but it is, you know, there are, there are things we can opt out of, and do slower, and, and so forth, but change is coming, and it's coming fast, and there's a lot of this we, we just can't opt out, and we're going to be living in whether, whether we want to or not. And Massachusetts state law is required to hit emissions levels every 10 years, and it's just been changed that we now need to meet 50% reduction by 2030, which is less than eight years away. The cumulative change in greenhouse gases from 99 to the present, which is, if I did the math right, 32 years, has been 22 to 24%. So in the next eight years, we need to do more than four times the rate of change as we've done over the past. So the, the pressure and the number of activities is going to really need to ramp up, and the people that run at it at state level are well aware of what I'm telling you, and changes are coming. And changes are both on what I'd consider the carrots, incentives to change, and then sticks, where there's forcing functions and regulatory changes. So I'm not going to go into details, I wrote a document that accompanied this, that tried to describe it, and I'd be glad to discuss that, but let me hit a few of the points here. The Mass Clean Heat Commission was formed to evaluate the options for eliminating greenhouse gases in the building heat segment, specifically using a mechanism called cap and trade, which is a pricing mechanism, where the state puts a maximum amount of greenhouse gas emissions coming from heating fuels, and every year that cap reduces. And in order to sell a heating fuel in the state, you need to buy an allowance, which gives you the right to sell a certain amount of emissions, basically. And the emissions go down, because every year that cap gets pressed down, but those allowances, all that cost gets passed through to customers, so there's, it's, it essentially becomes a pricing mechanism, where the price of natural gas and heating oil is going to be driven up over time, as people are forced to, to make the changes that are needed to eliminate the sources of climate change. It's a mechanism that was used, it's used in California, it's used in Europe, it's been used in Massachusetts in the Northeast, and a program called Regi, it's, it's an electricity program that uses this, and has used it for 20 years. So it's kind of a standard mechanism, but it is a forcing change, and it will, it will drive up the cost of natural gas in, in, in the, in the future, in the years ahead. The Clean Heat Commission is working on a very aggressive schedule, it's just gotten chartered, it, they announced it about six months ago, the first meeting was in February, their deadlines are like, May, they have their first report, that feeds a, a program I'm going to mention in a minute, this Clean Energy and Climate Plan on a July deadline, and, and then by the end of the year, they do their final report and they're done. So it's, this is like moving fast, and the expectation is it's going to be a, a pricing, a cap and trade system. There are programs up here like Mass Save, which are more like carrots, they're incentives. Mass Save runs on a three-year planning cycle, we've just started a new planning cycle. Money was taken out of many of the programs that used to be kind of core programs, and they're put into programs that are focused on fuel switching, from fossil fuels to electric heat pumps. So there's new incentives, new ways to make this transition faster and more effective, so this is the incentive side. One comment would be, that I need to make, is, is the Mass Save program has traditionally not been equitable in the way it's been adopted. It's disproportionately adopted by wealthier people, English-speaking people, single-family homeowners, where all rate payers are paying into it, only a portion are getting the benefits of it. And, so there's pressure on Mass Save, there's programs around that. Kim and Sustainable Westboro, Tim Kayler in particular, have been working on a program, I think you're all aware of, Community First Partnership, which I think is a great program, it's an example of proactive activities, which I think are good things for the town to be doing. And I lost a page. Oh, well, the, other one I want to point out is the Future Gas Study, which is really an interesting one. The Attorney General has an Office of Ratepayer Advocacy, and the Attorney General directed, I don't know whether directed is the right term, but she sent a, a strong letter to the DPU, basically saying, you've got a problem, you've got to go study this. And so they set up a, a study group made up of the gas utility and industry, and it's looking at this issue that as people respond to the carrots and sticks that were mentioned, people are going to be moving off the gas infrastructure, and the cost of the gas infrastructure has to be paid for. So the people left behind are going to pay a greater and greater burden over time, and it's not going to be equitable. It's going to be done in a, if you just do free market forces, the people left behind are going to pay an unfair balance. DPU has closed their docket, the gas utilities have all submitted their plans. Friday last week, the Attorney General responded to what was submitted, and basically rebutted a whole bunch of what they submitted. So again, this is a very dynamic environment, billions of dollars in play, equity issues all over the place, in a very rapid pace of change. So, the programs that are discussed here, there's, there's ones on zero emission vehicles, there's ones on clean electricity, there's all sorts of other programs that I, I'm not going into, these are pretty much building-centered. The culmination of that is this Clean Energy and Climate Plan, which is the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, deliverable to the state, and it's just been changed, it's a, every five-year plan now, and that has a mandatory deadline by law to be published in July. So, all of these underlying committees are busy working on input, which is going to get integrated into this plan, and it becomes foundational for our work, but also descriptive of all of the change which are going to come to Westboro. Couple of other things that have changed just in the last week. There's a new program on green communities. It's been rumored about for a couple of years, and it's called Green, it's been nicknamed Green Communities 2.L. It's basically a restructuring of, of the program for the goal of greenhouse gas emissions instead of energy reduction. I was asked, there were about 15, 20 communities asked to participate in kind of focus groups on a preliminary look at it, and it's, it's pretty interesting, and they've asked me not to talk about it in public, and so I'm going to limit my words, but it's pretty aggressive in regard to, it's going to be a whole new bucket of money, a new set of communities, a new designation, Climate Leader Community, or some name like that, and you'll have to check off five boxes and apply, and you get grant money, and it's, it's a retooling of green communities with the climate focus. And opportunity to fund heat pumps for all the commercial, all the municipal buildings, electric buses, sustainability directors. All of that is potential in the, so there's a pocket, a pile of money, they're designing the program and how to spend it, and asking for our feedback, so good stuff coming there. So good stuff coming there. The other kind of crazy thing is last week, the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs announced she's resigning. So there's going to be a change, there's a governor change coming. All of that is unknown. But you, you know the governor's changing. I don't know if you knew the Secretary of Energy left or is leaving. So those are my comments.
Great. Thanks. Any questions? Thank you for the update.
I have, Pete, I don't expect you to know this, but offhand, but I'm curious if you do. Do we know what percent of households in Westboro are utilizing fossil fuels, oil or gas for their primary heat source?
I do not know.
A lot?
Do you, yeah. Do you know?
Yeah. And again, I, I'm not, I'm not asking it in-
Eighty, 90%. It's, it's a big number.
Okay, thank you.
Do you, do you want to, do you have any comments or are you planning to make comments about the EverSource?
I, I don't think it's in Westboro's interest to comment on it. I think it's too complex and I don't have, I don't support a lot of, you'd have to parse it apart. There's really interesting things. EverSource is running a pilot of a new technology called Geothermal District in Framingham. In fact, we had a representative, Westboro resident representative at, at the Energy Fair talking about that. And I think there's really interesting things they're doing. There's a bunch of things in their submission, which is exactly what the Attorney General was criticizing. There's, there's, they're betting on really unknown technologies that have costs that are way higher. And they're betting that those costs are going to come down in order to defend, to continue their business model. And it, it's hard to defend that with the facts. But I don't think we should be writing letters to EverSource saying that, but that's my opinion. It's hard to defend it. The Attorney General is advocating for that position.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
A lot.
Yep. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to Item 9, American Rescue Plan, ARPA, Grant Projects Preview and Awards. As Christie's setting that up, we, if people were able to watch it, I did attend the Finance Committee meeting last night. This is something we, we talked in the Finance Team meeting. I don't want to steal Christie's thunder, but I probably am already. But this was previewed, what's going through tonight was previewed in both spots. And we're going to hear it this evening. And there's, there's two pieces that are more critical of this that we'll highlight. But I will turn it over to, try to talk slowly so you get everything up there, Christie, but I'm not doing it well.
Putting us to sleep. No, just kidding.
Putting myself to sleep.
Kidding.
But I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks. Good timing. So as, as you're all aware, the town received $5.7 million in American Rescue Plan money from the federal government. We became aware of this last year, but the final rule didn't come out until, I believe, March. When we became aware of the money, we asked, you know, we used the interim guidance and asked department heads and some committees that had relevant missions at the time, if they wanted to provide proposals. And so we put together our own internal process with some forms for them to fill out. And then we actually followed up after a meeting with the Finance Team, asking for some additional information. And then a few months ago, we actually contracted, we came before you and we asked to contract with Clifton Larson Allen as a consultant to really help us making sure that, that we're moving forward with eligible projects. And then also to help us with the reporting process, which is going to be a multi-year effort as we use this money. This was, you know, this timing, we've really been thoughtful about working through this process. But the timing of this coming before you is actually a good timing because we are hearing that at the federal level, there are some folks in the legislature or in Congress who are looking to claw back some of this money if it's not obligated. And so I did, as I mentioned earlier, I did sit at the hearing yesterday where the state was putting forward, the governor was putting forward that bill with use of ARPA funds. And there was a lot of urgency around obligating that money, getting it out to cities and towns so that if there does, if that effort does move forward, that they were not clawing back funds. And that's not just at the state level, but potentially at the municipal level as well. So it's not something that's happening, but it's, there's talk. And so we should be aware of that as we think about the timing of obligating our funds. So we did receive projects that exceeded $11 million, so project proposals. In your packet, you received all of the information that we received from the various departments who put proposals forward in terms of what they were looking for, why they thought it was a good use of ARPA money, what an alternative might be. Similar questions that we ask when they come forward with capital projects. In working with the Finance Team, we did recommend certain projects that actually, that come to roughly 5.4 million, so not using all of the money, saving some contingency of about 250,000 at this point. So I'm just showing the spreadsheet. I think that's the easiest way to look at this. The, the proposals in green are ones that we're recommending going forward. I think sort of some overarching thoughts that we had as we looked at what were the right proposals to recommend was what alternative funding sources are available for these projects? What, what annual costs might come, so budgetary impacts after the, after the funding is, has run out, which will run out in 2026. So those were some things that we really looked at when we were thinking about what was a good use. We also wanted to span the departments. Obviously, all of the departments were impacted by COVID, so we wanted to span all of the departments. So tonight, I'm just previewing this with you. I think as we go through, I'd like to hear from you sort of what you think the next step in this process might look like. When, when I say that, I mean, we, you know, we have talked about the Advisory Finance Committee making recommendations to you before you're making an award. But we haven't talked about if you're interested in having the department heads come in front of you so you can ask questions kind of similar to what we do with foreign articles in the capital process. There are two projects on here that we are going to ask you to make an award tonight and I'll, I will mention that. But as Ian said, both of those were recommended by the Advisory Finance Committee last night when we went through the projects with them. So the first project that we're recommending is the 25, the $25,000 for the assessors to do some additional inspections. There we go. The next section is all related to community development, economic development. These first few that you see here, the, the Economic Development Department gave us a request of just over $200,000 for several projects. Most of those were the 10 goals of the LRRP, the Local Rapid Recovery Process. And looking at the first two here, those were actually funded at town meeting using Economic Development Revolving Account Funds. So that's money that comes in from those digital sign boards, goes into the Economic Development Revolving Account. They use that money for the Small Business Grant Program, but they don't use all of that money. So the way the bylaw is written, they can't use all of that money at this time. So there was this extra money sort of sitting there. And so it was considered as an ARPA proposal, but in looking at it, we don't, we're not recommending that. We're recommending that we use that Economic Development Revolving Account for those two projects. The Activation of the Vacant Store Fund, we, we're not recommending at this time. But we are recommending the Comprehensive Wayfinding System. We think that that's something that we would want to move forward with more quickly. And that is an outcome of LRRP. That's also been put forward as an expression of interest in a state grant program. So we would, we're, we're proposing that we obligate the money, but obviously if they got this other grant, then we would use that money instead, freeing up this money. The Promotion of Bike and Pedestrian Mobility in the Downtown, the Night Market and Branding Campaign are things that we weren't recommending at this time, but things that, you know, would move forward. There's a lot of opportunity out there in terms of grants. And then the $65,000, which would be working capital grants, which is different than the small business grant that we currently have, where we could give businesses money directly to help them. So that, those are the two that we're, we're recommending going forward. But as I said earlier, that Forward Bill is recommending $382,000 for the town of Westboro. And so there are some opportunities for all of these things to sort of be funded through the state. So that's good news. This 132,540, that's the contract with Clifton Larson Allen, so that's already obligated. When we look at the Fire Department requests, the first was the four additional FTEs. That's something that the chief came and talked to you about. It's part of their plan in the next couple of years. But he has pursued that opportunity with the SAFER Grant. And so, you know, we should find out about that in the next couple of months. And so the, the group felt that that was a better use, the SAFER Grant was a better opportunity. The ambulance, we're not recommending at this time because there's, there will be enough money by the fall in ambulance receipts reserves where they could purchase that ambulance. So that's just a different mechanism of funding, but also something that doesn't impact the tax rate. The Hazard Pay, we're not recommending at this time. The public outreach is something that, you know, we might consider going forward with that additional money that we have left over. We are recommending the Police Fire Department Public Radio Infrastructure. So this is something that's been existing on the capital plan for the police and fire departments. The total ask is $300,000, but this specific amount is for work on the towers. And so the chief had put that forward as a ARPA proposal and we are recommending it. The, the Engine 3 replacement was something that was on the capital plan. It was coming up a little bit earlier because of the difficulty in building and the time that lapsed there. But we were able to fund that through overlay surplus, so that's funded. And then also the SUV Response Vehicle was also funded at town meeting. The Fire Department Equipment Washer was something that we thought was a good use of, of ARPA funds, so we are recommending that. And something that you're not seeing here, but I'll show it later, is another $5,500 for a washer dryer that they put forward. It's just missing from the spreadsheet, I apologize. But both the Equipment Washer and the Washer Dryer are in another bill to be funded potentially through state ARPA funds. So that's, that's good news as well. And then the Fire Department EMS Impact Staffing, that's something that the chief put forward to try to deal with some of the private ambulances not, not operating anymore. It's something that we're, this would fund staff overtime from 8 to 6, Monday through Friday. This is something that we're not putting forward because we think that this is an ongoing issue. So we wouldn't, we would need to be able to fund it beyond the, the one year. The Library put forward two projects. One is the Bookmobile with staffing. That obviously will have annual costs associated and something that we just weren't, we're not putting forward at this time as a recommendation. And then the other was the $1 million for the library renovation expansion. Certainly that project is a very high dollar amount. And so we just, we, we're not recommending it at this time. The three additional police officers, we, we did, we are recommending. I think we've talked about that many times, so I don't need to really go into detail. But that's something that was a direct impact of COVID, something that was planned to be put into the budget and was taken out because of the COVID impacts. When we look at the DPW, they put forward three water projects. The 215,000 was funded at town meeting using retained earnings, which we felt was a good use of the retained earnings and something that should move forward. We are recommending that we use the $810,000 to do that, to take care of that, one of the warrant articles that was actually a borrow, understanding that, that the water projects are, are paid through the enterprise fund, through user fees, and not by the, the whole tax base. And then there's the 1.4 million for the other project. The Forward Bill is also putting forward a lot of opportunities for infrastructure repair. Yesterday, in listening to others' folks' testimony, there was a lot of discussion about the need for replacement of failing infrastructure throughout the Commonwealth. And so there, we hope that there will be opportunity to, to offset some of these costs or other water projects that are in the DPW pipeline. The Recreation Department put forward the Recreational Splash Pad. That's something that existed on the capital plan for several years. And then I think was taken off in favor of the community center. But it's something that we were, that was put forward as an ARPA proposal. We actually think that this is a good use of ARPA money, especially given the discussion that we've had lately related to our difficulty around getting lifeguards. You know, that's a direct impact of COVID. We don't know how many years that will impact the use of the beach going forward. We also think that it would be a really good community asset. And looking at the School Department, we had the article for the HVAC. There's, initially, we had looked to, to fund this with ARPA. But as we became aware of the Armstrong Roof Replacement, we, we all felt that that was a better use of ARPA funds was for the Armstrong Roof Replacement. It would allow us to move forward more quickly. Clifton Larson Allen has, so that they think that's a good use of the money. And so, and then we won't have to have a special town meeting if we were to move forward without award. And it's roughly the same amount as what we were anticipating using for the Hastings HVAC. And then the High School Chillers, we're proposing to use ARPA funds for. So this, obviously, the Armstrong Roof Replacement is one that we hope to award tonight. And I know the superintendent is here, can answer questions. Youth and Family Services put forward three proposals. We are recommending one, which is for an outreach worker type. It's not, we're, we are not recommending an additional position. We're recommending this as a contract, contractual service. So that's not how it's written in your packet. It's written as an additional position because we were trying to avoid using ARPA funds to add additional employees. We recommended that this be used as a contractual service, so this, this money would be used for that. And then the last one is the Mass Works Matching Grant Funds. So Jim Robbins is here to answer questions about that. And obviously, we're going to talk more about that at our next agenda item. We will be asking the state to fund a five and a half to six million dollar grant for the Otis Street Corridor project. And we've heard loud and clear from the, from the state that they, you know, understand that communities have these ARPA funds. And so if we're looking at getting grants for these priority projects, they're looking at the town to use some of these funds to show that it is a priority and to, to kick in. So obviously, 250,000 is a very small, small match. But in talking to the consultant that we've been working with on the application, this was her recommendation, was the 250,000. And that's another thing that we would hope to award tonight so that we can include it in our letter of support. So that is a very brief preview. I, again, don't expect that you'll be prepared to award any of these, except for the two that we're asking for. And then maybe we can talk a little bit about process, so.
Great. Questions? Actually, I just had one quick one, and maybe me and our packet had the Armstrong School Roof, estimated time of 1.1. I know that we, we did receive and open the bids on Friday, so I just want to give them the, I think it's one.
Yep, so that's, so sorry. So this spreadsheet reflects that bid, which is the 1.263. Yep.
Just so everyone knows, 1.263 is the correct number. Patrick?
I just had a quick comment. I just want to thank town manager and team for the 244 pages of content that they created. A lot of work going into writing these proposals and getting them to us. And I look forward to the process as we continue to review, review their, their recommendations.
Alan?
Yeah, I, I think we can have some conversations around process going forward. I appreciate all the work. Prior to the role of chair turning over, I sat on the fine- all the work. Prior to the role of chair turning over, I sat on the finance team. So was at the initiation and the ramp up of the ARPA. And it's, knowing that, you know, all of the requests are worthy, right? But, you know, they were more than twice than the amount, you know, the amount of money. So it's hard. It is not an easy thing to come up with a system and make the decisions to prioritize. You know, for me, the, you know, personally, the emphasis on greatest, in response to COVID, the greatest long-term value for the town would lean towards things that would avoid borrowing and other projects that have long-term impacts. I'm comfortable with the balance of some projects being short-term and very point, you know, very pointed at meeting specific needs or specific enhancements to the town, you know, without, you know, adding ongoing resources or ongoing costs that weren't already planned, either through staffing plans or through the capital project plan. So I think it's a, a good mix of, a good mix of projects across many, many town services. It may be helpful to, maybe not for every project, but for projects we have questions about, get some, you know, have a presentation or a discussion with the appropriate department heads, and we can filter those out going forward.
Great. Thanks. Sean?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Christie, for all this work. This is terrific. And there's clearly a, a lot of effort and thought put into this process. I think in terms of the timeframe, I guess we, you know, we really don't want to go as long as we'd initially thought we had for this process. And we're looking at maybe trying to make all these allocations by the fall or?
So the guidelines remain that you have to obligate the money by 2024. But I think, sort of in the interest of moving some of these things forward, we were hoping to, to make some awards, maybe even before the end of this fiscal year, so in the next few months. I think, sort of given, you know, your interest in having department heads come before you, I'm sure the AFC will have a similar interest. We could certainly discuss whether or not that makes more sense to have some sort of joint meeting. But I think that, you know, we are interested in moving this forward as quickly as we can.
No, it makes a lot of sense. And I guess, you know, some of these projects have already been presented at annual town meeting. And so we're very familiar with those projects. And so for, for those other considerations, that would be great. And we're looking at another meeting this month and what, two in June probably, right?
Yeah.
So maybe a couple at each meeting or something.
Sure.
Oh, sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Shelby?
I'll just say echo comments made by all of you and the desire to bring some of the department heads forward and to hear more about the projects.
Great. Just talking about process here. Do you want to have us talk about, it sounds like next steps maybe, that we do want to have at least some of these come in in front of us, is what I'm hearing here. Do you want to talk about that now? Or do you want to do the, the two votes for the other pieces?
We could do the votes. And then that way, Jim and Amber are here. It'd be great.
Okay. Is the plan to have them present as they did at?
I, I think they're just here to answer questions. I think you've heard, we did have a presentation about the Masworks project in the last few months. And then obviously, at your most recent meeting, you heard the presentation from the superintendent about the Armstrong roof project. So I think if there's any questions related to that, you know, they're here for those, for that. But there's no presentation.
Do you like a motion?
Sure. I just, I mean, yes, go ahead.
So I moved to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of $1,263,000. Nope.
Yep.
For the Armstrong school roof, Armstrong Elementary School roof, and the amount of $250,000 for the purpose of providing matching funds for the Otis Street Mas, Mas, Masworks project.
Second.
Okay, move to second. I was just going to jump in real quick. Amber, just so folks here, I know you said at the finance committee meeting, but we talked, bid is in hand. The low bid, very reputable company, ready to work with us, move forward. It looks like with the vote tonight that we can, this can move forward this summer and be completed, which I think is great news.
Thank you for that addition.
Anything you want to add?
And I would just add that, what, the advisory finance committee voted eight to zero for both of these yesterday, right?
Yep. Thank you.
You summarized beautifully. I don't think you need more detail from me, other than to acknowledge that I think the team effort to both rotate the Hastings project out while we do some other work there, and to take on the priority of the emergency funding work for Armstrong so that we can not misuse the 50,000 to do an emergency repair that would then be ripped off, I think is another piece to remember of a highlight of just one good decision-making by everybody to move quickly. So I would say thank you. The bid awards looked, you know, as close in alignment as I would have hoped, given what we're seeing with pricing, with a very good company, and they're ready to move very rapidly.
Perfect. Great. All those in favor of the motion? Okay, five to zero, five to eight present. So get them started tomorrow. Okay. Sorry. Was it something on the, what we voted on or the next one?
Nope.
Okay. I just wanted to go quick. Whether folks wanted to go through, I know we have three meetings left. As Sean said, we can go through here and just see if folks want to, if they're ready to, of who we may want to come in. Or we can review and do that at the next meeting. That would just limit us to a meeting. Or if there's some definite ones now, and you want to think about others, we can see who we invite to the next meeting and then.
I mean, would it be possible for us to sort of maybe email Christie with our thoughts? And then she sort of synthesize it back to the group?
I'm fine with that. If that's good with folks.
I guess to, to reduce the burden on department heads and staff.
Right.
If we can schedule a short joint meeting with the advisory finance committee. So it's one, one presentation, one set of questions, rather than, you know, a roadshow.
Great.
Yeah, I would certainly second that as well. I would also just say, I mean, there's a number of recommendations here. And I don't know what I don't know about some of them, right? So I would encourage us to have all of these presented to us in that session because I think it's important that we hear the questions from AFC that we may not have thought of ourselves. A number of these have been presented in the past, but I think that there's still perhaps some new information that we may hear. Even if it's just a brief, quick presentation and there's no questions, it's still good, I think, good to have a refresh on some of, some of these topics.
Yeah. And, and as an example for the, all those related to the, to economic development in that first category or grouping, if you will, I'm interested in how the timing of the Forward, that you already presented, you know, so what, when, when does that come forward? No pun intended, I guess. And, and how does that impact here? And then, and then, you know, what other monies might that free up? And then that decision tree of, of how that, you know, the money might be real, or allocated differently across other projects. So, I mean, not to ask the question now, but that's one of the examples. It's not just about hearing the presentation by other departments, but really understanding kind of all these other grant opportunities at play and, and not wanting to jump ahead to allocate money before other funds may be available.
And I would also say that maybe an indication, Christie, from you or staff in regards to the residual funds, like what are you thinking like that, that left, I think it was a few hundred thousand dollars, if I remember the math correctly, of where you think, you know, that might, you know, what's your next project that you would look at?
Yeah, I think some of that is contingency funding.
Yeah.
So for some of these, especially if something happens on some of the larger ones that it slightly goes over, we'd have money to cover. Armstrong roof, yeah, we have a firm bid, but if something comes up, maybe it's contingency. But then I think, yeah. But we also have, if, for example, everything that's there that's under, from the EDC side, from the LRRP, if that gets funded through a state level, there's no reason for us to use our ARPA money, which then returns more money. I think then we go back to the drawing.
Because there's some smaller dollar amount, like the fire department, I know, youth and family services, some smaller dollar amount projects that we could fund.
Right.
Right. Yep. Yep.
And I, I guess I just want us to be cognizant, you know, particularly for some of the projects that were approved at town meeting that involved borrowing, but also involved construction, that I think we need to make a decision on those projects quickly so that those projects, and, and, you know, the one that pops out at me is the water quality chlorine potassium hydroxide project, right? We have a price. It was approved at town meeting at 810,000. If we spend three, four months discussing it and that delays the start, I expect that price will be higher than 810,000. And so the sooner for some of these other, you know, projects that we can move forward, the more confident we can be with the numbers and.
Okay.
Yeah. So my, my question, go back to Patrick. So there are a couple of these that, as you just talked about, the DPW, all of this went through town meeting. I don't think we need to have them back in to talk about what was voted on at town meeting.
True.
Hopefully that's okay.
Yeah.
Similar thing to the school projects. Those were, well, now we just moved one, but the other two are already voted and approved for bonding, one of them.
Right. But the Hastings.
Is approved. There's still work they're doing. So they're not ready to talk about that at this point. So I wouldn't call them back in because.
Right. Not, there was an amount approved, but not, it's not fully.
There's work that, yeah, they have to do with ADA, some ADA stuff and et cetera that they're working on, not ready to come back. So I guess from that part, I think I would recommend that from a schools and DPW, that we don't need them back in at this point, just because they're all ones that we've heard at town meeting, was voted on at town meeting, inclusive of the Hastings. But there is some more work the school has to do. And they've asked us to allow them to do that work and then come back to us.
That's fair enough. That makes sense.
But the rest of them, it sounds like the rest of them.
I was going to say, do we want to just identify them now? I mean, it seems like we're having that conversation.
I think if you just take those two out, I think then we just say, let's pull the rest in.
Yep.
Coordinate it with, here, here. And I think that makes sense. Let's, let's see if we can coordinate with finance committee. If we can do that all together, that would be great. And whether that means a separate meeting or their meeting and we join them, a joint meeting that way, or we think we can fit it into one of our regularly scheduled meetings, I'll look to ask you to figure that out for us.
So, or, just, just to be clear. So for example, the police and three additional officers, are we suggesting, because we've heard a lot about that, are we suggesting, and it's being recommended by the finance team, are we suggesting anything green is also being discussed? They just happen to have one line item.
Yes. That was my thought, unless you tell me differently.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I'd leave it up to you.
I mean, from, I mean, there are some on here, whether they be green or not, that I don't, I don't necessarily feel like I need to hear more information on it. That is one of them that I feel like I, but, but again, we're aboard.
Well, let's take it this way.
Sorry.
Nope. We removed, I think I heard you mean.
School and DPW.
School and DPW, that's off.
Yep.
We want to look at other ones. Why don't we, as you suggested first, ask folks to go through the list, let Christie know which ones you want to hear from, or, you know, if it's more easy to say all but this, just let her know. We'll coordinate that by majority. If there's only one of us that wants to see one of them, we can do that separately.
And the finance committee might have other thoughts about who they want to see.
Right. But let her coordinate. And then, so what I will ask is, we've got that. Let's, if folks can take this list back and let Christie know, I mean, because I'm biased too, because I've sat through finance team, we run this stuff. So I've heard it many times.
Yeah.
So I don't want to be the one deciding on any of that.
And I'm supportive of hearing all of them because I think what we hear, the public hears it. So I, I think that there's, there is benefit to that. But.
Yeah. No, fair, fair enough. I'll, I guess if I can ask just another question on process. So when these are presented, is the plan to have a period of time after they're presented? Or are we looking to do a vote on each one of these at that point in time?
No, I don't think that we would.
Okay.
Be, I mean, I, I don't think that we would be looking for.
Okay.
I think the plan is to present.
So I just want to, because I want, I want the community to have a chance to hear those presentations, have us have a chance to, you know, understand them better, mull it over in our heads, what we're being asked here to vote on. And then I guess finally, and it sounds like probably the answer is yes to this as well, is I, I'm, would suggest that we have a line item vote on each one of these.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd definitely be a line item. I think we'd want to do that. I think that, again, if we, if we go with a joint meeting with, I mean, we were looking for recommendation from them. I think this, as I would frame this, is we will meet together, hear all this stuff, they will take it back, discuss it on their side, come with recommendations to us. And then we ultimately own the vote as the board to vote.
Yes.
And I agree that I would suggest as well that we vote each one of them as a separate line item.
I do have one question. For the DPW proposal, 1003 and four, the school, high school chillers, when would we need to make a decision to use ARPA funds to not have those projects be part of our next borrow?
I'm sorry, the DPW?
Those were both approved.
810,000.
Those, the 810,000 for DPW and the high school chiller project, which is green at 1.62 million.
Right.
Both approved at town meeting with an authorization.
Well, we wouldn't borrow until we were moving forward. So they're holding on those projects until we, you make a decision.
Okay.
So those are sooner than later then, because we want to get them done with the construction.
Right. Okay.
Right.
Good question. So.
So those, you may be even talking about the next meeting. If folks think about it, do you want to put that in the agenda for those?
I'd, I'd like to, just because.
Right. So by, by process, you would ask the AFC to consider them. So I think maybe if we get this meeting that we're discussing on the books sooner than later, then, then you can move forward.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to skip over item 10 on special town meeting. And thanks, because of the vote we just made, we do not need to call a special town meeting, which is great. And also, it saves us money, saves the taxpayer money because it costs us money to run a special town meeting. So that's good news. And I think the smart move that we made is town. So moving to Masworks grant application, letter of support. You hit that, and Jim as well?
So we don't have the letter of support for you, but obviously you've heard about the opportunity. And so that is due, I think, June 3. And so I guess we would just be looking for authorization for us to draft a letter of support and have the chair sign it as part of the application. And then, like I said earlier, we would include within it the town's intent to match that grant with the 250,000 in ARPA funding. So Jim is here to answer questions. But that's really what we're asking for.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Jim on the grant?
I just have a question. So the consultant drafting the letter is, the consultant is, I forget.
Thank you. Jim Robbins, town planner. Our consultant is April Anderson, and she's paid for by Atlantic Management as part of the approval for 64 Otis Street. The 50 Otis Street project, which was the Amazon Robotics, required the construction, I should say, the, the completion of the Otis Street corridor study. Out of that study came a recommendation for a Masworks grant. So Atlantic hired the consultant, April Anderson, to put together the grant. The grant application is for all intents and purposes, complete. We just yesterday received the 25% design plans, which was done by MDM Transportation, the transportation consultant on the project, also paid for by Atlantic Management. Those plans at that level are what's necessary to be submitted to the, to DHCD and EOEA for the Masworks grant application. And as you know, as Christie mentioned at your last meeting, we met with the lieutenant governor several weeks ago to talk about this application specifically with the entire project team, including both our grant writer as well as the traffic consultant. And we received favorable recommendation there. And we're told exactly what we needed, which is why you took the vote on the, on the grant funds earlier. So I think we're in a good shape for this large grant.
And it's, just for clarification, so is April Anderson the name of the firm or the actual person? I'm just.
That's the person and also the name of the firm.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Sole proprietor.
MDM I was familiar with. I wasn't, wasn't that name. Thank you.
Yep. Just one comment, having watched the AFC meeting where this was presented, that the corridor study in this grant is really looking at Smith Valley Parkway North to Route Nine, the Route Nine Otis intersection, which we know is a huge issue. Nine, the Route Nine Otis intersection, which we know is a huge issue, a question was raised at that meeting, what about traffic that goes south on Otis to Fisher Street, and was mentioned at that meeting that there are separate projects and efforts underway to look at speed, traffic, and truck exclusion on Fisher Street.
Yes.
And so that is, that is an active, we're not forgetting about it.
Lots of discussion going on at the act...
A lot of active discussion and work happening as well.
Yes, we've talked about that, thank you again, Jim Robbins. The project for fifty Otis Street, Amazon Robotics, was required to do a pre-opening traffic study to determine a baseline of the traffic on Fisher Street from Smith Parkway to Fisher Street and along Fisher Street, so that they could get a sense of what would happen post occupancy. They conducted another traffic study post occupancy to see if there was warrant, what the state DOT requires for truck exclusion on Fisher Street, and at this time, with just fifty Otis Street occupied, there is not a warrant for truck exclusion on Fisher Street. However, they're required to do yet another study eighteen months after the occupancy of Amazon Robotics, which is in about another year, a little more than a year, they'll be doing the last follow-up study to see if traffic has changed, and I think that that's a good idea, because then you'll have the other Am, the next Amazon also occupied, and probably the last Amazon project on Otis Street will be nearing completion at that time as well. So I, I think it's a well-thought-out process, at that time, we can respond to questions by the Active Transportation Safety Committee and the residents of Fisher Street.
Thanks, Jim, thank you.
Question, can we as a board, do we have the authority to, to change the traffic on Fisher Street? You know, if we wanted to make a, to, to state that no commercial traffic can go down Fisher Street, is that something that this board has the authority to do?
No, not for, not for that type of an exclusion, I mean, you have some abilities on traffic rules and regulations, but if you're doing exclusions, you, you don't have that authority.
I'm just thinking back to our parking space out there, you know, we were eliminating a parking space.
So, right, so part, as far as parking, one-way streets, things like that, that's within your traffic rules and regulation, but specific exclusions, you don't have.
So who is the, who is a, I know that there's a num, there's...
DOT allows the, the selectmen to determine whether or not they wish to create a commercial truck exclusion, but that will only be granted if twelve percent of the traffic is designated as commercial truck traffic, and under the most recent study, it was actually under five percent, but they're gonna study it again, as I said.
So really tough, like it's a result of the study that we could make the call, but we can't do it just randomly, it has to be as a result of the study.
And it has been, as your liaison to the Active Transportation Safety Committee, a broadly and deeply discussed topic with resident input and involvement, which is great, and, you know, Kristi is participating in those meetings as well, and so it's, it is very much what I call a live topic, to Jim's point, and, you know, and to Alan's point, this is, it's not like we're sort of thinking about Smith Valve and, you know, heading to Route Nine only, it's a very holistic view of it, with the understanding also that there's a school on Fisher Street, right, and lots of pedestrian traffic, so very much in scope, also intersects with, you know, the B-Walt project, there's intersection there, and then of course the, the new bridge that is being constructed over the, the...
There's also a safe route, there's also safe routes to school.
Right, I mean, there's, so...
Grant application for sidewalks and crosswalks on Fisher Street.
So, so, very much a local focal point and, and understanding of concern, I will also add that at the last Active Transportation Safety Committee meeting, there, there were some very specific resident complaints around heavy commercial traffic, but those were what I'll call more isolated to some specific projects, and those were, those concerns have been addressed by our, through Jim, and then to our building commissioner, as to the proper routing and expectations of, you know, haulers.
Yeah, to the credit of the residents of Fisher Street, they took pictures and videos of the trucks that were driving on Fisher Street. Some of those haulers were associated with projects that were restricted during site plan review to not use Fisher Street.
Right.
So when, for example, a site plan review is, is given, the planning board will designate specific streets and specific hours of operation for that hauling, so Fisher Street is never identified as a route, unless there's a project on Fisher Street, or on a neighboring street, say like Arch Street. So Fisher Street was excluded in the cases that we were concerned about, and we identified trucks that were not to be using Fisher Street, and those contractors were contacted, and they are no longer using Fisher Street, and we have been able to verify that by talking to the actual haulers themselves.
That's great to hear, just a quick follow-up question, does the twelve percent also apply to town-owned roads, or is that state-owned roads?
Oh, it's town-owned roads.
Town roads still, interesting.
So, so for example, Church, Church Street down here.
Oh, I know that, but I, it's just interesting that the state would, would mandate that on a town, but...
That's because it's a public way.
Yeah.
If it's not a public way, it's different. Private way, they can do whatever they want to restrict the traffic, but, for example, oops, sorry, Church Street has a truck exclusion, and there was a similar study done, and Church Street, as you can imagine, if there were no truck exclusion, it would be the primary way to avoid the rotary going east-west, so, and it was, and they found that they were, that they exceeded the level for truck exclusion, so the state backed it up by saying there's warrant for this exclusion.
Thank you, great. So I think the motion then that we're looking for is a move to authorize the chair to send the attached letter of support. A letter of support.
A letter.
A letter of support, so moved?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? It's five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the two thirty-one Turnpike Road RFP.
So I did forward you, I think today, the most recent version of the RFP, it hasn't changed much, it's really just cleaned up from last time with the final sort of legal review. One of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was about what's we'd sign the PNS, that the awarded bidder would pay carrying costs until closing, and speaking to town council, they advised that that could be difficult in terms of if, if we don't end up closing, and giving the money back, and then it might also deter someone from moving forward, so, so that was her advice, as long as the board accepts that, it has not been put into the RFP, and then also, you may have noted on page twelve of the version that I sent you, there's a question about, it says that the closing shall occur within thirty days from the date on which the buyer obtains permits necessary to construct and operate its project, has financing in place to undertake the project shortly following the closing, and then provided that the closing occurs no later than January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and so there was just a sort of check-in to make sure that the board is comfortable with that date. So that would get us past that timeline, that revision period.
Thoughts?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that date for a couple of reasons, in large part because with our, it, it fits within the timeline, given the timeline of the RFP and our expedited permitting process, that, that should work within, within the time, within the timeframes.
I'm fine with the date as well, I don't know if others, okay, we're good, I get nods. What about the at-first piece, any concerns with what Kristi said, with not including the piece about covering the cost of...
I think that's reasonable.
Yep.
I mean, I think it makes sense to leave it out, I mean, that in, in the event something were to fall through, then you have an accounting nightmare, I think.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, great.
Do we need a motion to approve?
No, I think we're gonna talk...
Yeah, I think you're gonna discuss it, you're supposed to get in executive session, and then it should be ready for approval at your next meeting.
We'll have the dates and all that, so we'll prove it.
Right, okay.
Perfect, so no vote here.
Great.
Okay, next agenda into the department, transfers, do we have any?
No.
Okay, so we can skip over that, we did the meeting minutes, issues and correspondence of the select board. Mr. Keo, I'm gonna start with you tonight.
All right, thank you very much. So the Senior Tax Relief Committee will be meeting on Thursday, we're gonna be reviewing home petition rule applications from other communities, there are seven of those that the town assessor has provided for us, there's also a draft version going through the State House, and so we'll be discussing those and trying to come up with a draft for Westboro if folks are interested, and I'm sure at some point in the next month or two, we'll have John in to talk to us about all of that. The Library Building Committee met two weeks ago, just after our last meeting, and we've received updates from the architect and the project manager. At this point, the documents are in the state to get it accepted as a CMR project, we're hoping to hear back hopefully by our next meeting, but technically the state has up to sixty days to respond. But the architect is already starting to meet and has held meetings with the library employees and is working on feedback and updates to the documents for the library. And then finally, the EDC met last week, reviewed a very successful year in review awards ceremony, and also had our last, we're doing quarterly distributions for our local companies looking for grant money, and we had our last distribution for this year, and we have now completely exhausted the annual amount, which, I don't know, may be the first time Zach's done a tremendous job of promoting the program, and so there'd never been a prior issue with there being enough money, and this year it was a big issue. We had probably twenty to twenty-five companies come before us, so it was a really terrific job on his part, and that is what I have for tonight.
Great, thank you. Alan?
Okay, two, two quick things, the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust is meeting on Thursday morning here at nine AM, I believe Westboro TV will be broadcasting again, there will be two, two of the projects that were discussed, one of the projects that are discussed at town meeting will be covered, and that the, and it turns out the engineering study that we thought wasn't happening yet, that was paid for by the Mass Housing Partnership, has been actually completed, and the Housing Trust and the Westboro Housing Authority have that as far as bill-to-bill, the potential for building on the existing property owned by the Westboro Housing Authority.
Right.
So we'll be reviewing those findings and discussing next steps in moving that project forward. The second, and I've received calls, both as a trustee and as a member of the select board, as we've talked previously, there's an apartment complex in town, the residences at Westboro Crossing, formerly known as Charles, now Meadows, whose affordability restriction is set to expire at the end of September of this year, that the trust had engaged, has engaged a consultant to work with the state to identify programs that we could help the developer, you know, the owner of that complex implement, and we've got an initial report from the consultant, and we'll be discussing next steps and how we move forward at Thursday's meeting as well, so those are both high priority issues, because we are, we are looking at the potential loss of twenty-four affordable apartments and the displacement of twenty-four households, so.
What's the, I'm sorry, the end date of that, I missed the...
September, end of Sep...
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yes.
Great, thank you. Shelby?
Oh, see, that's what happens when you ask a question, you have to go next.
No, see how I was going, and I forgot you last time, so I didn't wanna forget you again.
Thank you. It can be forgettable. Okay, just a reminder, the rescheduled date for Westboro Unplugs, Booking It to Bay State event, because it was rained out, the new date is May eleventh, that's tomorrow, five thirty to seven thirty, so folks are encouraged to head down to Bay State with a blanket and a book, and family, kids, lawn chair, and just chill out, and I think it's gonna be actually nice weather, maybe the wind will die down, and there will be Tattletick Booksellers hosting a book swap, and the Westboro Public Library will be there, be it just a nice kind of community event, so if you have time, take a stroll down or, and check it out, and also wanted to remind folks that the Board of Health, you may have seen this, but the Board of Health is, has available COVID rapid test kits available, so stop in there to pick those up, they're free, and I know that they've been doing a great job of getting that word out to other, through the library and senior center, et cetera, but for folks that may not have seen that. And we do have a failed school building committee meeting, that project is, you know, it's not quite done, because there's still lots of site work being done, but there are some issues with the geothermal pumps, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna try to speak to those here, I can certainly give greater detail if the board would like, but that will be discussed at this Thursday's meeting, which is at four PM. And the public is welcome to join those, and that's all, thanks.
Thanks. Patrick?
I guess I just, one topic, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you again to all of those that supported the Energy Fair, very well attended, we had over three hundred attendees at the fair, fantastic, to see all the kids and the presenters, I personally spoke to no less than a half a dozen different kids and looked at their presentations, a lot of enthusiasm, I was really thrilled to hear how much they had learned about the environment and about sustainable topics, and again, thank you to the committee for the work that they did and all the vendors. Let's see, Shelby already mentioned the book sw, the book fair, I guess, two issues, I, with the recent uptick on COVID, Massachusetts, I believe, has gone red again, our numbers are fairly high, I think, considering when we've talked about this topic in the past, I'm hopeful that we can get a report either through the Board of Health or the town manager soon as to how the town is doing and what steps, if necessary, should be taken in the town, just because, again, we're, we're, we're rising up quickly, it looks like. And then, I'll just, a, a comment, I noticed on Lyman Street, several months ago, a number of very large trees were taken down on Lyman Street, I don't know if those were taken down by the town, or by the state, or by residents, but they are, they're very, the stumps are very high, they're, they're, they're spray painted, they're quite ugly, actually, that's the best way to describe them, so I don't know if that's something that can be looked into, to see what the plan is for those. And then, just one other comment, a question, I guess, for Kristi, is in regards to the sidewalk that was, the sidewalk system that was put down Lyman Street all the way down to the beach and the pickleball courts and onward, there is no sidewalk that goes across Chauncey Street, so I don't know if that was part of the plan, was to get a sidewalk across that, but the beautiful sidewalk system was put, but there's no crosswalk across Chauncey Street itself.
You mean, like, kind of where it then joins up with the beach again? Where...
A crosswalk, you're talking about, not a sidewalk.
Crosswalk, excuse me, crosswalk, did I say sidewalk?
Just because it's painted.
Crosswalk, it, crosswalk means, sorry.
Oh, good point.
I meant crosswalk.
Good point.
So, it's just something to look at, if it was planned, let's get it in there, if it wasn't planned, maybe that's something we should take a look at.
Can I, I just wanted to respond, the Board of Health is meeting, excuse me, the Board of Health is meeting on Thursday night, and they're gonna talk about COVID, and they're also gonna talk about, they're gonna have a discussion on mask advisory on Thursday, so...
Terrific.
I also did talk to the Public Health Director, and she noted that though our numbers have gone up in looking at wastewater samples, they are expecting our numbers to go down based on that.
Okay.
I know that's not the full report, but that's good news.
That is good news, thank you.
Great, thanks for that update, and we can wait to either watch or hear from the Board of Health. There's a couple things on my side, have, we had our trustees of Soldiers Memorial meeting last week, and folks remember, we had a resident come in about adding additional militia that responded to the alarm at, called for Lexington Concord on April nineteenth, so that's moving forward, it's been brought in front of the trustees, and we're just working through, through that kind of process and approval, and the opponent is working on fundraising, et cetera, and we're just working out some of the details there. Also, the folks may know, I didn't know, but in the new cemetery up off of Route Thirty, there is a veterans' grove that's been put in there, and a request was made through the school department, they are... are excited, they're gonna help work on designing kind of a veterans' memorial up there, so it's kind of a combination of students and teachers, et cetera, so that has been kicked off, but I think that will really, they're really excited about it, but it's a use of that to kind of give them some experience in CAD design and all this stuff they do, but also to help the trustees out with the design piece for the future veterans' memorial up there. And the other, only other thing I had was just a reminder for, for our senior citizens, that this Saturday, 5 o'clock, at the Senior Center is the free pasta dinner put on by the Boy Scouts, Group 100, and sign-ups can be done. If you don't know, they can be done through the Senior Center, so reach out to them to get your name on the list. We just ask people to sign up, so we can make sure that we have enough pasta, meatballs, salad, et cetera. So very, looking forward to that, it's always a, a great event. That's all ahead.
I'm sorry, that's open to primarily seniors?
It's open to seniors.
Okay.
Yep.
Move to executive session, all right. I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Department of Public Works and clerical unions, under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at 231 Turnpike Road, and under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve the executive session meeting minutes of April 12th, 2022.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and litigating position, and the board will not be reconvening in open session. Kind of a second to the motion.
I have a sec. Go ahead. I have a second to the motion.
Okay, it's been seconded, roll call vote. Patrick?
Welch, yes. Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Keo, yes.
Actually, yes.
Okay, we are in executive, or going into executive session. Thank you for Westboro TV. I beat you to it.